Call this mean to order clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Here.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Here.
Rovell.
Here.
Strumeloburg.
Present.
Mayor Melhan.
Here. Sunshine notice?
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting was published in December 19th editions of the Star Ledger Belleville Times. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Belleville Town Hall bulletin board and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes. Okay, so first I just want to welcome everybody for joining us. This is our combined conference regular council meeting. As like last meeting, things are a little unique today. Here in the council chambers seated with along with myself is the deputy mayor. To my right, we also have our township attorney to my left. Also present in the room is manager Iacono and our clerk, Ms. Kavanaugh. On the phone, I believe every other council member is present on the phone. So with that being said, traditionally, we have some different items that we discuss. There were really were no items for the conference today. Usually substitutes for our work session. Anthony, is Dean on the phone or no?
Not for the executive session.
No, because he'll be there later. Okay. So we have actually no discussions for today. We did have a few that were scheduled, but in light of the coronavirus pandemic and everything else going on in town, we decided to hit the pause button and pump the brakes on a few of those things. They will be on the next combined conference that we have. So the next item on our agenda is an item for executive session. At that moment, the township council needs to deliberate in private session. So we will be hitting the pause on the live feed and it will resume as soon as we come out of private session. No actions or votes will be taken while we are in private session. The reason why we're going into private session is to discuss Rivera versus the Township of Belleville. So without further ado, I need to entertain a motion to enter executive session.
I'm making a motion.
I'm moving. Seconding it.
We have a motion made in second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumeloburg.
Yes.
Mayor Melhan.
Yes. The feed will resume as soon as we come out of private session.
Hold on, guys. Counsel.
Executive session.
Motion active.
Executive.
Second.
Motion made in second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumeloburg. Mayor Melhan.
Yes.
Good, guys. Hold in. Why does that look so low? I forgot I lowered it.
Okay, for the members of the public that are still viewing, we have exited executive session and we're just waiting to reconnect with our council members on the conference line. So give us a minute or so and we shall resume the meeting.
Hello.
Hi, councilman DePena.
We have exited executive session and we're just waiting to reconnect with our council members on the conference line. So give us a minute or so.
Okay, I'm here.
All right, I'm here.
I'm here.
We're gonna take a roll call. Kelly's gonna take a roll call again just to make sure we're all on, but everybody mute your phone when you're not speaking.
So on this call, we should have five council persons and several different department heads. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm. And Dean should be...
Yeah.
The roll call is gonna be to just reconfirm the council members have made it to the new line, correct?
Correct.
All right, so we're gonna just do a quick unofficial call. Council members that are on the line, just listen for your name.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Uh, here.
DePena.
Here.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Rovell.
Here.
Strumeloburg.
Murray?
Strumeloburg?
You're here.
Mayor Melhan.
I am here. So we have every council member reconnected to our second call in line. Do we want, do we know what directors or do we, do we need to do that or no?
I think we should just, for the record, we should...
Do we have a list?
Yes.
Okay, so at this point, I know that joining our five council members on the telephone line, we also have some of our department heads from the township. So the clerk is just gonna read off your names. Please, everybody mute. I hear some moving around on the phone. Please mute your line until you, you have the opportunity to speak. Yep.
Kevin Esposito.
Here.
Yara Acosta.
Here.
Judith Curran.
She's the one that we need. Cutie.
Mary Cabanillas.
I'm here.
Steve Martino's here.
We're gonna need her. We're gonna need the CFO.
Frank DiLorenzo.
Here.
Chief Oliveri.
I haven't coughed in a month.
I'm here.
Tommy Augusta.
Here.
Thomas Haritz.
Here.
Billy Gilbert.
Here.
Deputy Chief Lutz.
Here.
And Dean Donatelli.
Here.
So the only person I think we missed was our CFO Judith. Judith, are you here?
Okay, she's calling right now.
All right, we're just gonna, we just contacted her. She's calling in. Just give it a few seconds. Welcome, directors. Thank you for being on the call. Thank you for helping us facilitate a meeting remotely. We're just waiting for our CFO Judith to call in. She's told us she's dialing. Steve?
I gotta, I can't. Write it. Hold up. I think, I think I just heard Judith.
Judith, we heard a beep. Is that Judith?
That's me, yes.
I'm just gonna fix my chair. Nope, I guess I'm not gonna fix my chair. Okay, so directors,
thank you for joining us. We have exited executive session and we are now moving on to Roman numeral number six. Approval of minutes, Madam Clerk?
A combined conference and regular meeting of March 10th.
Make a motion.
I have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion made in second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano. Notari.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumeloburg.
Yes.
Mayor Melhan.
Yes.
Regular meeting of March 24th.
Make a motion and approve.
Second.
Motion made in second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumeloburg.
Yes.
Mayor Melhan.
Yes. Okay, so just gonna remind everybody on the call to just mute your phone. And at this point, we're gonna move over to item number seven. It's the report of the manager. I'm gonna try and get the manager in camera view. There he is, but staying six feet away from everybody. Thank you, Mr. Manager. You're live.
All right, members of the council and certainly for the residents that are with us streaming, good evening. My, my manager's report today is just gonna be just a, a brief summary of what's been taking place since the start of this crisis, what's going on on a day-to-day basis. I think it would be very helpful if you realize the hard work of all of our employees. But our, our typical day starts anywhere from 7:30 to 8:00 a.m. There's a call between the OEM director, the health officer, myself. Again, we review anything that happened from the previous day or specifically the night before. And that's at 7:30 in the morning. At 10:00 a.m. every day, the police department, they hold their conference call with their sergeants, lieutenants, captains, deputy chiefs. Again, they're reviewing all incidences and challenging situations from the previous night and the day before. At 11:00 a.m., our health officer and our health director participate in a call with the state department of health. And that's every single day. And again, they're reviewing the latest information from the state as far as from the health perspective, and they take that information back to us. At 12:00 noon every day, six days a week, the OEM team led by OEM coordinator Deputy Marty Lutz, we, we have a call every day at 11 o'clock. Again, we're reviewing all of the directives that we receive from the governor's office, all the challenges that are, we're dealing with on a day-to-day basis in Belleville. But that call starts every day at, at 12:00 noon. The fire department also has a, a call with all offices and all, all members of the department, and that's done periodically during the week as well. While this is all going on, the mayor is called to take calls from the governor's office, from the Essex County Mayor's Committee. So the mayor's on other separate calls, which again, he's bringing that information back to us. While this is all going on, we have our DPW working every single day as an essential need to the community. They're out every day and they're continuing working. And the employees here in Town Hall are working on shift, shift schedules, and we do have some employees working from home. But this is all happening every day. We haven't stopped providing the service to the community from day one. And I'd like to just basically take this time to say a big thank you to all of the employees. Please, Fire, Public Works, and certainly the employees, and some of them are on the call with us tonight. You're all doing a, an amazing job during this period, so I say thank you. Back in June, when I was hired, there was some question whether we should bring on Mark Minikini as the assistant town manager. I just wanna use this opportunity. The last two weeks, Mark has just been incredible. Certainly, he's been a great asset to me. And again, his years of experience in Belleville has been such an asset to us. And again, when we decided to bring Mark on as the assistant town manager, I don't think we could ever imagine the level and value that we have. So I just wanna personally, I know he's not here, I know he's on the call, just wanna personally thank Mark for all of his help. This Friday, we will be, our newest fire engine, our newest piece of equipment will be, be brought into service. Father Ivan is going to do a little blessing Friday morning. And again, it's just great news that we have a new piece of equipment on the road. As you know, we also have a new ambulance coming on. It's a couple of weeks away. We're waiting for some radio equipment, but it's exciting news to, to be able to say that we have a fire truck, new fire truck, new fire engine, and new ambulance on its way. And then my, my last topic that I do wanna share with the group is that through the assistance of Dr. Tomko, who has been another hero, so to speak, we have been able to provide breakfast and lunch to seniors. Two weeks ago, our first day, we delivered 12, 12 lunches. Today, that number's up to 80 lunches a day. So there's 80 senior citizens that are getting breakfast or lunch or both. And our employees that are working from home and working in the office, we are over 100 calls every day to seniors just to say hello, to make sure that they're doing well, to remind them that they should, should absolutely stay in and only come out under the, the most extreme reasons. So I think that's just a, just another pat on our back to all our employees for rising to the occasion. And that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Manager Iacono. Next topic is Roman numeral number eight. It is the report of the mayor. I guess for those council members that are either watching the live stream on Facebook or watching on, on the town website, the first question I have for Manager Iacono is, is that an ascot you're wearing around your neck or what?
Pants?
It matches your shirt and your suit.
Yes, I just wanna be fashionably correct, okay? So, and it is a face cover, so we are politically correct, but certainly fashionably as well.
I prefer the face cover supposed to the ascot. Manager Iacono did a great job in his remarks for, for manager, his manager report. I'm gonna just echo a few of them. He really did take some of the items that I had to discuss today. First and foremost, I just wanna thank all of our municipal employees that have been working non-traditionally, whether they're staggered hours, whether they're making calls from home. Obviously, all of our directors are going above and beyond. We talked a lot about our first responders, our police and our firemen that are literally on the front line, everything they've been doing. As the manager mentioned, our lives consist of conference calls. Our lives consist of one call to the next, information gathering, sharing it with the team. I sit on probably five. I was gonna also thank our chief, who has been our assistant township manager now. Why? Because while Anthony was down and out, proving that Belleville is bigger than just one man, our second-in-command stepped up. So I just wanna acknowledge and thank the chief, of course, for that. The school district, I know Anthony mentioned it. I've talked about it every single week on my Sunday fireside chats. The school district has gone above and beyond, proving that we are indeed one Belleville. Dr. Tomko, very early on, talked to me about a senior program. We waited about a week or so to get it off the ground. We wanted the students to come first. After the students were well cared for, about a week or so later, we moved into seniors. And we haven't stopped. And I wanna, you know, publicly mention this to my council colleagues. We're in this, you know, myself, Anthony, the chief, our, our township attorney, we're in this every day, several times a day. And I, you know, I just want every council member that's here listening to, to just be proud for a minute. Because what we've accomplished in taking care of our seniors, whether that was getting special hours for ShopRite to open up for them, whether that was then amending our dialer rights schedule. So we will pick them up at 6:00 in the morning to deliver them to ShopRite when it's cleaner, to us dealing with Dr. Tom, going to school district to make sure they have meals, two hot meals a day. We've really done a great service to our seniors, including from our employees being home, as you heard from Anthony. We're literally doing wellness checks now. I believe we're up to maybe 100 seniors where every couple of days, an employee who's home, working for the township but working at home, is calling up on our seniors to check in on them. I have fielded several questions from them. They have a lot of questions about taxes and homestead rebates and all that great stuff. Just to reach out and touch our seniors is remarkable. And somebody who gets little fanfare, because usually Anthony hogs up most of it, I just wanna thank our learn-it council, who's always available, always on the calls, and always giving us his learn-it advice and keeping us out of trouble and getting us out once we're in sometimes. But that's really it. It's a, it's a quick little mayor's report. We have no events to discuss. We are looking forward, though. We, we hope to believe that we're cresting. I'm the one that gives the numbers every single day. If you saw today's report, they continue to climb. Keep in mind, these are Corona-related deaths, and Belleville seems really high compared to some of the other communities in Essex. I believe that's a combination of just our density and/or our ability to test. So without further ado, I do wanna move the meeting forward. Madam Clerk, I just wanna acknowledge that Dean Donatelli is also dialed into the call.
Yes.
We might need him in a little bit. So that's it. We have completed the report of the manager. We have completed the report of the mayor. Next up, we have committee reports. This is something that we do at the first meeting of every month. There really, I don't believe any specific committee items to report. Maybe some IT stuff from Councilman Graziano or Councilman Rovell. I don't have anything specific for committee. The deputy mayor is sitting next to me, so I could see him, so I'm gonna let him go first if he's got anything to add.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The only thing we do have going on right now is with our grant writing team, a lot of the money for the grants is actually in trust funds. So what happens is even though this is a stage of emergency for the entire nation, that money allocated for grants is actually still there and still available, and by law, has to go to certain, certain areas. So we are still going along and applying for, for the grants that, that we could use. So I'll have an update in the next meeting or two on the ones that we'll be applying for in the next round, which is about July 1st, so.
And I believe, I'm gonna ask the deputy mayor this question. He handles a lot of the grant calls and whatnot. We were discussing earlier that the $125,000 came in.
Yes.
So that was something that our Senator Ruiz got for us in the last budget at the state level. It's $125,000 for Belleville to use toward recreation. We have already allocated, I shouldn't say allocated, we've categorized some of the money. Deputy Mayor, if you wanna read through that.
Yeah, we have town murals going on in three or four locations. We have improvements to the pistol range. We have new signage at all of our community facilities, and we have the dog park coming in. So we have specific numbers on each of those categories, and we're gonna be working on that in the next couple of months here.
Mr. Manager, that new signage is, is not gonna be all caps, I assume?
No? Absolutely not, sir.
Not all caps?
Not all caps.
We're done yelling at kids in the playground?
Yes.
Okay. It's, maybe we could tell kids what they can do in the playground as opposed to no running, no laughing, no having fun, no nothing, just, we're gonna...
It's a great idea, Mayor.
We're gonna, we're gonna review this before we actually print the signs, okay?
Check and double check.
Yes. I'd rather say what they can do than what they can't do.
Steve is going to...
Can't ride a skateboard.
Stay on top of me till we get there.
Can't laugh, can't, can't play hopscotch.
He's got jokes in there.
Can't do anything.
No playing.
Okay, so let's go. I know we have some council members on the line. I guess, does anybody there wanna jump out? I mean, I, besides IT, I really can't think of anything that a committee would have to report. Does anybody wanna jump in?
No, nothing at this moment.
I got nothing either. Nothing here either.
Yeah, Mayor, I can, I can just jump in for the, the IT part.
Yes.
So right now, as we've discussed in the past, we have three phases of upgrade to our IT. We have our new email for the entire, I'm sorry, for, for everybody in the town, for our new email to be, it's being worked on. And we also have our new internet service being worked on with our security piece, which is one of the three, one of three phases. That's at a really 10,000-foot level, but we are working on it and we're, we're moving right along.
I thank you for that. Obviously, I'm somebody that's always talked about and complained about the email here. Today, Councilman, you and I were on, on email thread with the manager who could not forward us a PDF. And I actually happened to be in the building today when two employees celebrated that their emails came through. This is literally what we're dealing with here. So I'm very grateful for you, and I think Councilman Rovell had some say in this whole thing that's been going on for a year or so. The bond is in place. We're ready to go. I'm anxiously, eagerly awaiting some of these upgrades. Did, I just wanna make sure that gave every council member a chance that maybe had something for committee. Are we good?
Yeah, good.
Yeah.
We're good.
Okay, sounds like I heard most people there. Okay, so next item in our agenda is communications?
One, communication received from David Rengor requesting the mayor and council to support a resolution to conduct a compressor station study on the Roseland compressor station.
Okay, ordinances?
Ordinance number one for introduction. An ordinance creating a five-year tax exemption of local real estate taxes pursuant to NJSA 48:21-1 to Bridge Acquisitions LLC for improvements on real property located at block 9103 lot 1 and authorizing execution of financial agreement with Bridge Acquisition LLC.
Make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Motion made in second to introduce. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumeloburg.
Yes.
Mayor Melhan.
Yes. Before we go to item number two, I just wanna again say to the council, I'm eagerly waiting the second reading of this and passing for final adoption. This is going to solve a 40, 50, 60-year blight problem. And it's something that this council should be very proud of, the fact that we collectively can hang our hats on finally developing a 24-acre site that has been vacant and no other mayor and council, no other administration besides this group, has been able to finally push this thing over the finish line. I was involved with that 20 years ago, and that was already 20 years in, probably. So again, I'm eagerly awaiting second reading on this, counsel. This is something that we all should be very proud of. Item number two.
Ordinance number two for introduction. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the township of Belleville, County of Bestock, New Jersey, amending the Belleville Township Club to establish a tax abatement program pursuant to the five-year exemption and abatement law, NJSA 48:21-1.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Motion made in second to introduce. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumeloburg.
Keep coughing towards Steve. He's got a mask on.
Yes. And just to give you guys another update on that one, that is the one that we need to pass in order to finally pass number one. So that actually sets up the plan. And once that's accepted on final adoption, that allows us to vote on second reading on the first item. That's kinda creating the plan so that we can issue the first one. Okay, so we were supposed to have a caucus today and discuss this concept. Instead, maybe we'll do either an executive session or just an explanation for the next council meeting. So any councilor that's got a question on that can ask. In the meantime, council, because we did not have a caucus on what this is all about, any single council member that's got a question on this can always email the clerk and get in contact with Dean, our redevelopment council, and/or our township attorney, who can explain what this is all about. So we have all have a lot of knowledge before we actually vote for final adoption. So now we're moving on to item B in ordinances. Ordinances for public hearing, second and final reading.
Yes, ordinance number one for public...
Madam Clerk, before we do that, can I just have you read the notice that we have published, if you don't mind? Just read it nice and loud so you get picked up in the mic.
Due to multiple executive orders declared by Governor Murphy and in an effort to prevent further spread of COVID-19, the April 14th, 2020 Township Council, Township Council meeting will be closed to the general public. The meeting is being streamed live on the township's website, www.bellvillenj.org, as well as the township's official Facebook page. The public always has an opportunity to make comment to the mayor and council during public meetings. With this new format, if you have a comment, please submit to the township clerk at kcabanal@bellvillenj.org by 6:00 p.m. on Tuesday, April 14th, 2020. If there are any comments or questions on the ordinance for public hearing and second and final reading, please submit them as well to the township clerk at kcabanal@bellvillenj.org by 6:00 p.m. on Tuesday, April 14th.
I can't read your lips.
The township clerk will read into the record your comments or questions concerning this ordinance during the public hearing, and will read your comments during the public portion of the meeting. Please submit your name, address, and state your comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I know that was a mouthful. Just, this is the second time that we've done this, and it does appear to be for the near future. This will be our protocol. As you noticed, from improvements we've made to our public meetings without the public sitting here since the last meeting that we had, the last time it was just streamed on Facebook, we've made some improvements, and this time it's streamed on Facebook and on the township website. So you don't need to have a Facebook account to watch us. But what the clerk just read, as far as how our policy will be for public commenting during public commenting portion of the meeting, as well as for public comments and/or questions for second and final reading, until the, for the near future, it seems like this procedure is going to be our procedure. And again, I thank the council and the directors who are joining us on the phone, because we are trying to limit even inside this room, some social distancing. So without further ado, we are going to move on. We only have one ordinance for second and final reading and adoption. Ordinance number one.
For public hearing and ordinance to amend and ordinance creating some acquisitions and adopting reclassification and compensation plans.
Make a motion, open it for public hearing.
Second.
Motion made in second, open public hearing. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumeloburg.
Yes.
Mayor Melhan.
Yes. So the clerk has received several different comments and/or comments and questions for tonight's meeting. We have both collectively looked through the entire stack, and we have identified one where it pertains to this particular ordinance at this particular time. So I'm gonna have the clerk read that into the record.
This is from Vincent J. from San Antonio, 129 Mount Prospect Avenue, and he asks, ordinance for public hearing adds recreation aid. Is this position to give a job to a fellow with the initials A.S.?
A.S.
A.S.
I'm thinking. It's a question. I wanna try and answer it. I, I don't solve riddles, so that's the problem. I know we have the manager here. If you'll step in the frame, Mr. Manager, I also know we have the CFO on the phone if need be. But, Mr. Manager, a lot of people, you know, we very rarely get the credit this council does for every time we amend the salary ordinance or such titles. Everybody always swears we're creating new positions to give more people more money. I think since I've been here, we've done this numerous times, and the overwhelming amount of times we've done this is to cut a salary or reduce a salary or to create a new... this is to cut a salary or reduce a salary or to create a new entry-level position that's lower than what the previous entry-level position was. Is that all correct?
Uh, yes, by $40,000.
By $40,000. Okay, so now can you maybe answer, this is a recreation aid, I'm assuming we did not have the title, and a salary for a recreation aid?
That is correct. So we created the, we created the title, but the position, uh, has been a person working part-time for almost 40 hours, uh, so there's really no impact to the budget, and as a point of information, the employee's, uh, initials are not A.S.
Well, it's not a new job for a new person, so this is taking somebody that's been there and creating a full-time job for them at a lower level than what the previous entry-level position was, correct?
That is correct.
All right, I know. I don't think we're gonna get any applause from Mr. Frant Antoni for this, uh, but that's, that's the answer that he was looking for. Okay, so, uh, we have no other comments for this particular question? Nope?
Nope. Make a motion to close the public hearing and move for final adoption.
Second.
We have a motion made to both close and at the same time move for final adoption. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nutari?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Strumel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Mountain.
Yes.
The ordinance is approved.
So next we have public comments. It is the same exact long paragraph, uh, that the clerk just read. I don't believe she needs to reread it, uh, but the same procedure stands. Any member of the public has the right to participate in our meetings. Uh, they have the ability to watch our meetings for free of charge on the internet. They also have the ability to comment during public participation, which is about where we're about to enter. Um, this agenda was posted on the website on Friday. The clerk's email remained open until 6:00 PM tonight. She did receive several questions from several different individuals. Uh, as always, people have to state their name and address for the record, and they have five minutes to speak on virtually anything they want, and, uh, so I guess, Madam Clerk, we're gonna go in order, the same order that I have here that we went over earlier?
Yes.
So do you want to state the person's name?
Let me, uh, open.
What's your motion?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna make a motion.
Oh, I apologize.
For public comment.
Uh, so I apologize. We have a motion to go into public comments. Uh, we have a motion made in second, so I'm gonna ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nutari?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Strumel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Mountain.
Yes. So can you state the name and address for the first person?
The, uh, first person I received an email from was Michael Sheldon, and he did not give his address.
So we have a name, but we have no address?
Correct. His first comment is, "Please confirm that the first ordinance for introduction involving bridge acquisitions pertains to redevelopment of the former, former Kitty property on Main Street, which will now be developed into a large warehouse distribution center following the planning board approval of the project last November. Two, please explain the details of the second ordinance for introduction. Is this affecting particular properties as written? If so, which properties are involved? Please give addresses rather than lock numbers. Three, in the light of COVID-19 situation, when do you expect the 2020 municipal budget to be formally introduced, as the DCA already extended the introduction deadline last December 2019 from the end of February to the end of March? Is the township already late in introducing this year's budget, or have Governor Murphy and the DCA further extended the budget introduction deadline? And four, on the township website, council member, Councilman Nutari's biography indicates he has a PhD in English from Rutgers University, as well as being a current faculty member at Monmouth University. Can you please state to the record what year he received his doctorate from Rutgers, presumably their new brunch at campus, the title of his PH dissertation, and confirmation if he is a faculty member at Monmouth University."
Good job, Madam Clerk. You got it done in under five minutes. Uh, I believe one and two have been asked and answered already. Uh, we discussed them, I discussed both of those topics as we voted on the first ordinance and the second ordinance. Anthony, do you want to take number three? Or are you, if not you, Judith maybe?
Yeah, so the, uh, we have been in contact with DCA. They pushed it back to April 28th, so we did receive another extension, and quite frankly, there may be another, uh, extension beyond that. But right now, it went from March to February, and, uh, February to March, March to April. So right now, it's scheduled for the end of April, and we'll wait and see what else we hear from DCA.
So is the township already late?
No.
No, thank you. And, uh, we don't need Judith then to explain anything to that, right? Okay. Next, uh, comment?
Next comment is from Mary O'Drawes from Little Addis. It says, "Why are the full agenda items not posted to review online? I would like the full details on resolution number six. And is it true that the mayor has performed weddings in the town hall last month and why? And if so, he is jeopardizing the health of our police and township employees."
Okay, so this is our second comment, or with an incomplete, uh, comment section, no address again. Um, this email was sent in at almost a quarter to one on today, when the agenda's been posted since Friday, so there was ample time for Mr. Drawes to receive the full details of number seven if he wanted them. And, uh, that question about me performing weddings has been asked and answered. Uh, I've been asked that question on Facebook, and I answered it with the dates of March 20th and March, no, uh, March, March 20th and March 30th. That's it for me. Good, right? Uh, next?
And the left is of Vincent J. Francis Antoni, 129 Mount Prospect Avenue. His question is, "Consent agenda item four. What is the contract for? What is the amount and the terms?"
Gonna push this over to Anthony. Uh, this is, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, I know we have a contract with Millennium. I know they work on a monthly basis. I know they cover X, Y, and Z. Uh, they're now gonna assist us in filing for our federal FEMA reimbursements, and we will get approximately 75% of any money we've spent, and they're gonna help us filing for these grants?
Any, any cost and any funds we spend on the grant, uh, or grant writer, we would get a minimum of 75% back reimbursable, and this is to go after the FEMA money, correct?
So not only are they gonna assist us in getting our fair share of federal money because of a natural disaster, but even their fee, 75% of that fee can be reimbursed from the federal government?
That is correct.
Okay.
And also, uh, Mayor, I want to add that, uh, usually in a disaster, FEMA has, uh, their own facilitators that help the town, uh, the townships, uh, write the grants and everything. However, in this case, because it's so widespread, they are not having facilitators. So all the townships are on their own.
On their own, but they instead will reimburse 75% of the fee?
Absolutely.
Sounds like a win-win to me?
Yep.
Okay. That, I need a motion to...
Make a motion to close public comments?
Motion made.
Second.
Yes.
And second to close public comments. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nutari?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Strumel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Mountain.
Yes. Just gonna give, uh, council members a minute or so to look through the consent agenda. There were some last-minute changes. Just gonna give yous an extra minute. You should have eight items on your agenda. Anybody have anything to pull off the consent?
No.
No.
I have, I'm gonna pull off number four. Uh, Mr. Manager, item number six, I know we have Dean on the phone. Item number six is the redevelopment agreement, uh, for the Belmont. That's the Belmont Project in Silver Lake, correct?
That is correct, sir.
So we have an amendment to that agreement? That's why we, we already passed that, but we're gonna do it all over again.
We are doing it all over again. It's passed once, and again, uh, maybe Dean, if, if need, if the council wants to give us a, uh, summary.
Only if a count, do we have a...
Yes.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman?
I'd like to hear that summary, sir.
Sure. Uh, I, I didn't need a summary. The Councilwoman, uh, Burke is, uh, requesting from Dean Donatelli, our redevelopment council, just to give a summary of, Dean, why don't you give us a, a quick summary of the overall agreement and then tell us what this particular change is?
Yeah, so, thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, this redevelopment agreement, uh, as you know, is to support the, uh, 230 some odd unit, uh, residential project with about nine, nine, uh, 19,000 square feet of, uh, retail in Silver Lake, um, near that Light Rail Station. The redevelopment agreement, uh, basically puts the rede developer on a timeline as to when the project will commence, how it will proceed, um, addresses affordable housing, uh, contributions to the, uh, trust fund. Uh, it addresses off-site contributions, insurance requirements, indemnifications, uh, to the town, and so on. So it's basically a contract between the rede developer and the town as to, uh, you know, the rede developer's obligation to complete the project, uh, and what off-site improvements are, uh, you know, the rede developer will complete or make a contribution, uh, to the town in connection with those off-site, uh, improvements.
Thank you, Dean. Uh, Councilwoman Burke, do you have any additional questions?
Uh, no, no, I think I have them.
Okay, so just to put my hands around this, this is basically the contract between the township and the developer to build out the, the Belmont Development Project, the 232 units, 19,000 square feet of retail in two different buildings. Uh, this is our agreement with that developer to go forward and do those things. Um, I mean, this is...
Correct, that, correct. That, that agreement is in place, but this resolution that's, uh, up for consideration tonight, uh, when, which is good news, the project is going forward because the rede developer is seeking, uh, financing, construction financing to start the project, and their lender, which is not unusual, uh, asked, asked for an amendment to the, the redevelopment agreement, which I just described, uh, to put in certain, uh, lender or mortgagee requirements. Things such as, if there's a default by the rede developer, the lender, um, wants to get notice of that, the lender wants to be able to cure that default if they're, um, upon giving notice. Um, if for whatever reason the property goes into the, uh, the lender's possession due to foreclosure, or otherwise, um, they, they, uh, they, uh, substitute, uh, a new developer subject to the town's reasonable discretion, all of which, uh, are, are customary and, um, uh, provisions which you would see in most, in most, uh, redevelopment agreements. They weren't in there initially because, uh, the rede developer wasn't that far along with their financing, um, so I would suggest that this is, this is pretty good news that the, the project is gonna go forward.
Yeah, this is, I mean, obviously, this is a project that I've supported, and I've been looking forward to not only the groundbreaking which we had recently, but seeing this thing built out and coming to fruition. I think that's, I mean, my, my sentiments on this project have always been positive, so, okay. Uh, does any other councilperson have any other questions now that we have Dean here talking about this specific, uh, this specific vote?
No.
No?
Or customary.
Okay, so that's handles number six, and so we're just gonna have, we, we pulled off four and six. We're gonna have, I'm gonna entertain now a motion to move the entire consent agenda with the exclusion of items four and six.
Make a motion.
Move. Second.
We have a motion made in second for the consent agenda. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nutari?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Strumel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Mountain.
Yes.
Make a motion, uh, to move consent, uh, no, uh, agenda item number four.
Number four, yeah. The Deputy Mayor discussed this one already. We have a, uh, oh, he said it already. FEMA usually gives us people the right grants. Here, we're gonna use our grant writer that's very successful for us to write the grants, and we will get reimbursed, hopefully up to 75% of it.
I second.
Uh, I have a, uh, all right, uh, Deputy Mayor made a motion, it's only Councilman Graziano made a second.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nutari?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Strumel Burke?
Take no part.
Mayor Mountain.
I abstain.
Uh, make a resolution number six.
Six.
Second.
This is, uh, i- item number six is the Belmont redevelopment, uh, agreement. We have a motion made, and we have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion made in second for the Belmont Redevelopment Project in Silver Lake. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nutari?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Strumel Burke?
Take no part.
Mayor Mountain.
Yes. Says, Councilwoman, this, this project includes some major upgrades for Silver Lake. You, are you aware of that?
Yes, I'm very aware of that, especially when we won't be able to, we can test the Belmont Avenue for 200 apartments.
Okay.
I understand, thank you.
That's kind of the reason why they're building a parking lot, but, okay. We'll see. I think it's in the agreement we just voted on.
That's right.
Okay, I hope it is. We have, uh, any new business?
Anthony?
No new business. Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Wow, because you know what he's doing.
Hold on, Steve.
Oh, Steve.
Anthony's got.
So, we were notified by, um, not the company that we pay to recycle, but to the landfill where we bring the recycled material to. Uh, right now, Belleville is a, a, um, a do, uh, not a do, a single-stream recycling town, which means on Wednesday, the town puts out aluminum, glass, cardboard, and paper all together.
Komingo.
And Komingo, that's a single stream. Because of this, uh, crisis, so to speak, and the lack of manpower in the landfills, they, uh, we are presently paying $80 a ton. We have been notified, if we continue to Komingo and to do one single stream, then it is, uh, going to go from $80 to, um, $120. This represents somewhere in the neighborhood of $12,000 to $13,000 a month increase. So, uh, Steve, uh, Mr. Martino is going to review to see if this is legally that they can give us a 50% increase. One of the things that we are gonna have to review with a very dear future is to go from single stream to dual stream, which would be a challenge, and it would also create a lot of work, uh, on the part of the community. So this is something that, um, is supposed to go into effect Wednesday, tomorrow, uh, and we have to come up with some alternatives, because clearly this is a $100,000-plus expense. So unless any of members of the mayor and council have any specific questions on this, we are gonna monitor it very closely. Steve and I tomorrow are gonna get on the phone and try to negotiate a better deal.
Anthony, I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, so, I, I understand, uh, how we are today, uh, but other towns, they have, to where they have the, the, the two different cans, or dual, dual, I don't know the, the right terminology. But if we go that route, isn't it cheaper for the town? I know there's some education and there's some, uh, coordination that needs to be done, but long-term, isn't it better for the town?
Yeah, well, dual stream is always more efficient, more effective of a, uh, recycling, uh, process, because right now, we're actually paying somebody to separate our aluminum, glass, paper, and cardboard. That's why it's single stream, and that's why it actually costs us $80.
Right. Now, I'm, I'm with you, but we're, we're gonna put some thought into going dual stream down the road.
If the community goes to dual stream, then each resident would clearly be the responsible party to separate glass and aluminum in one bucket and paper and cardboard in another bucket. That doesn't happen overnight. There's a lot of education and a lot of messaging that would have to take place. From the immediate problem, from the immediate problem, Steve and I are going to be on the phone tomorrow, and we're gonna see if we can negotiate a better deal than $120 a ton.
Yeah, and I'm, I totally get you, and I totally understand, and I'm, I'm with you. But I'm just saying, if we were to think about going dual stream, it's also, of course, savings, correct?
Yes, do, 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 yes, because right now, we're paying somebody to separate it. If the residents do it, we would actually save money, correct?
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
And Councilman Graz, there's, uh, there's two ways to do the dual stream, you could do both, both, uh, types of materials the same day, or you could, I've seen it in towns where they rotate and do, uh, like every Wednesday would be glass and aluminum, and then the next Wednesday would be cardboard, and then, and then it goes back, the following Wednesday back to, uh, aluminum and glass, and then you would, you would just rotate, so there is, there's a couple ways to do the dual stream also.
Okay, great, thank you.
Just a little historical information here, we originally started with dual stream, and it would ended up being actually not that much more expensive at that time, to basically start to commingle, but now if they're going to do this kind of stuff, it makes sense, plus we throw up to separate it out, because you, you were still paying approximately the same amount for the dual stream as you were for the single stream.
Right.
Then, uh, Councilmen, there are still towns like Nutley that actually do it themselves, and, uh, they save a lot of money too, but then you need manpower and trucks and equipment[1728.94]